We'll call the Tuesday, September 20th, 2011, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. And at this time, I'll call upon Commissioner Griffith to lead us in prayer, please, ma'am.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that you have given this land that we live in, and we don't take those for granted. And tonight, as we make decisions, we pray that you give us wisdom on making right and just decisions for the citizens of this county, and that we will be good stewards of the money that you have entrusted to us. We pray protection for our men and women that are serving overseas. We thank you for the people and the resources that you've placed in this county. Again, we ask for wisdom, and we ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, there are a few adjustments. On memo number one, item A, under appointments before the board, Cindy Kincaid cannot be with us tonight, however, she is asking that the board consider her proclamation in her absence. And we have two items that I would like to add to under closed session. The first is a legal issue, and this is under GS 143-31811A3. And the second is an economic development issue, 143-31811A4.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from any member of the board? Hearing none, I'll move that we adopt this agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under appointments before the board, we have a presentation of a proclamation to Central Island Council on Government, I'm buzzing Cindy Kincaid, who cannot be with us tonight, proclaiming October 2011 as National Long Term Care Resident Rights Month. Madam Clerk, is there a need for us to read this proclamation?
Uh, no, sir. You might read the last paragraph.
Okay.
It resolve.
It reads as follows: Now therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October 2011 as National Long Term Care Resident Rights Month, and Iredell County encourages all citizens to recognize this important observance. This is the 20th day of September 2011 by the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. And the floor is open for adoption of this proclamation.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we have a second item under appointments is consideration request from Shepherd's Volunteer Fire Department to use $75,000 of their fund balance for parking lot improvement and generator for Station Two. This will be budget amendment number 10. We have with us Chief Kelly Robinson. Mr. Robinson, glad to have you with us, sir.
Thank you for taking this time, let us be here. Thank all you commissioners for the job you do for the county. I know it gets tough sometimes, manager could meet me tonight. Like I said, I'm Kelly Robinson, Chief of Shepherd's Volunteer Fire Department. This is the Board Chairman, Brian Harwell. And we're looking for funding for two projects we're working on. And it came clear to me this year, it seems like we're having a lot more storms and activity than we have in the past, and people are looking for like a shelter place to go, and it's not so much as tornadoes, as trees falling on residences, and just different activities and emergency situations. And we'd like to take our fire station, too, in the area of Dooley Road, that's out on NC-150 West. And we'd like to put a generator system in that station, so when it powers out and all, it'd be a, it's like a shelter for people to come to. Secondly, we've got a request for, I guess, a parking lot issue we have with some asphalt. It was actually built in 1992, and asphalt layers, only about a one-inch thick layer, and it's been undermined with water, and it's caused it to crack. And we've got a lot of issues there. And we did get some estimates on paving, the parking lot back. And with the estimates we have there, we're reaching 75 percent of the value of going ahead and concrete in the parking lot. And after meeting with the Board of Directors and the Board Chairman and all, we've decided to go out and we let bids out for the concrete, and we have three bids back on that also. But we would like to ask for funding from our fund balance. And if I'm reading the fund balance correctly, I spoke with Susan, and it should be around 160,000. We're asking for 75. We don't want to deplete that, but we would like to ask for funding for those two projects.
Okay. Any questions?
Does the cost include the generator, too?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got a question. Chief, as I understand it, the problem that you have with the asphalt is you said you've got, there's some sort of a water issue.
Yes. Three years ago, from out from the station, if you pull a fire truck out on Apron, the asphalt was thin, it started sinking up. We actually concreted out three years ago, 30 feet from the building. But it's, where the water runs off the concrete, it's caused another issue, it started going under the asphalt. And it's in a waterway, and they say it needs to be regraded, and the grade was never set right on the building to start with. So now they're wanting to regrade it and put the concrete in like in a six-inch pad with rebarb underneath it.
Okay, because I was gonna advise you, first of all, I don't have a problem with you wanting to do this project. And I don't have a problem with you wanting to take the money. But I would like to encourage you that if you have a water issue just going from asphalt to concrete, instead of having asphalt cracking, you'll have concrete cracking.
Yes, sir.
Concrete doesn't change it if your subsurface is not done properly, and it sounds like it was not done properly. So if all you do is concrete over it, you're gonna be disappointed.
Well, that's the issue with the asphalt now. They're having to raise the catch basin, they're gonna raise it almost two feet and regrade the area. So they said, even our subgrade underneath the asphalt wasn't put in correctly. And we've had trouble out ever since we started. And like I say, heavy as that apparatus is coming in, with it only being one-inch thick, we had problems to start with from the very beginning. And then even around the building, they put flower beds in, with the drainage from the rooftop of the building, it's draining in them flower beds and letting it go under the asphalt. And so now we've had it, where they're gonna grade it back in concrete all the way up to the building. So we don't have that problem now, you know, if it does that. In our quoting bids, it shows all the grading they're gonna have to do. So that's what raised the price of it up a little higher. And if we go back to asphalt, you know, like you said again, I think we're gonna run the same problem.
Yeah. And who was it that came up with this design that is supposed to fix the problem?
We had concrete, JC's concrete out of, off of Judas Road, which the guy lives in our fire district, which he's helping us out a little bit because he's in our district. And we had Evolution Development Company out of Mooresville come and look at it. They actually were the asphalt company, which has got a drawing of it, the grading, it tells the problems, it gives a pretty good detailed issue of what's going on. And we really didn't know the issue of it, so we had them out and started doing this project. And like I say, it was done in 1992, so that's back before I knew a lot about what was going on with the fire service anyway, until I got up to date with what that issue would be with that station. I'm not saying it's, you know, an issue that can't be corrected very easy, but it's something that's gonna have to be done from a company, you know, that's a reputable company that can do all that for us.
What I'm saying is, did you just present them with the problem, and then they came up with what the solution should be so that this won't happen again? Or did y'all tell them this is the way that we want it done?
No. Well, to be honest with you, there's ways I'd like for it to be done, but it's gotta be done the way they want it done because of the way the grading's gonna have to be, so.
Each person that came out and presented the bids, I was there, presented it to them, what we were looking at, each one of the contractors actually pointed out the regrading that needed to be done to actually drop that catch basin in the back to where there's more of a flow to the back of the building. I think originally, the asphalt we're looking at wasn't a design issue that we had anything to do with when we built the building. It was the fact that the asphalt was put in, it was one of the free projects that the state does. And they come in an asphalt, some of the front, the front of fire departments. And so there wasn't a lot of grading done at that point. They just pretty much came in and laid the asphalt in at that point. And that's what's giving us the problem.
The state did that, you're saying?
The state used to have a project where they would asphalt volunteer fire departments, lots. And they did the Station One, and then we had them go out and do Station Two, and we built that station back in 92. And the work that was done then has lasted 19 years, but this needs to be changed, and it wasn't done correctly to begin with as far as the slope, according to contractors we had to look at it.
Which size generator are you buying?
This is a 40-kilowatt generator. We've got two bids, one from Intercoastal Electric, and we also had a bid from Tarheel Electric. We're looking at a natural gas generator. We're also looking at extending, and that, there could be a little bit of discussion on that, but we're looking at extending the natural gas lines from Lake Norman High School, we're 700 feet from the main line. And Public Service Natural Gas will extend the line from Lake Norman High School to the fire department. Unfortunately, they do want $6,000 to do it, but right now, we're on propane, and I think over a few years, we'll end up saving some money by converting over to natural gas for the department.
Okay.
Doesn't it have to pass by the fire station to get to Lake Norman High School?
Actually, Lake Norman High School comes first when you go down Dooley Road, and we're, the fire department is 700 feet beyond Lake Norman High School.
We're both on the same side of the road, on the right, but there's a three-acre field between us, open field.
Any other questions, these gentlemen? Okay, now the floor is open for a motion. I'd offer a motion that we grant this request. I think they've had, they have ample money in the, excuse me, in their fund balance, and if they don't attend to it, it's gonna get worse, and it could compromise their building at some point. So I'll offer that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Chairman.
At this point, we'll call the meeting to be in a public hearing, in consideration of a closeout report on the 2008 Community Development Block Grant Economic Development for the Providencia USA Rail Spur Project. And Ms. Blumenthal, glad to have you with us.
Well, thank you, and thank you for hearing this a second time. The 2008 Community Development Block Grant that the county received to build the Providencia Rail Spur has been completed. The total project was $903,611, and the CDBG was $527,700. As a part of this project, 56 jobs were created. Thirty-nine percent of those jobs were considered very low-income households, as far as HUD, median family income. Thirty percent of those jobs were low-income. Twenty-three percent of those were moderate income. Only 4 percent of the jobs were above moderate income. So I think this is a success as far as the number of jobs that needed to be created. I'd request that the board authorize the closeout of this grant.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumenthal? Is there anyone in the audience who cares to speak in regard to this matter? This is a public hearing. Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the closeout of the 2008 Community Development Block Grant Providencia USA Rail Spur Project. Okay, thank you. Words you thought you'd never hear, Ms. Blumenthal.
I still don't believe it.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Diblock is especially glad to hear that, I'm sure. Okay, we'll move to administrative matters, and Mr. Smith, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Actually, Ms. Blumenthal has memo number four.
Okay.
Thank you. Each year, the county commissioners are requested to approve and appoint two members to each volunteer fire department's board of trustees for their fireman's relief fund. This is a requirement in order for them to receive funds from the state fire marshal's office to go into their relief fund. I request data from each volunteer fire department to make recommendations for this board to appoint, and I've included that list with this memo item. There have only been a few changes, and I noted those changes beneath, or excuse me, if it was a replacement for somebody different than was appointed in that last year, I have shown the person being replaced right beneath this year's requested or recommended appointment. If the board does choose to appoint the people who have been recommended, then we will file this information with the state fire marshal's office.
Any questions, Ms. Blumenthal? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the fire departments.
Okay. Motion for approval from Ms. Griffith. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Memo number five is a request for approval of a proclamation proclaiming October 9th through 15th as National Fire Prevention Week in Iredell County. And Misty Sherrill from our fire marshal's office is here to answer any questions.
Hi, thank you for having me.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Sherrill. Any questions, Ms. Sherrill? I believe this is a proclamation that is sponsored by Mr. Mitchell. Okay? No questions. And Ms. Sherrill, the floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the proclamation. Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Memo number six is a request from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for endorsement of applications submitted for Level 2 JCPC funding, and Susan will make that presentation.
In August, the Department of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention announced $1.5 million available for Level 2 funding for youths that have already been adjudicated by the courts. And local programs were invited to submit proposals for this Level 2 funding. And last Tuesday, the local JCPC, appointed by this board, endorsed four programs. One is for Appropriate Placement Options at $24,000. One program's for Berium Springs Home for Children, $103,231, a family counseling program. Another for Berium Springs of $121,738 for youth sex offender treatment, and one for Piedmont Mediation for $61,000 for a family group conferencing program. There would be no county funds involved. If these are awarded, we will know by October 1st. There are members, Pam Navy's here from Appropriate Placement Option, and there are some people here from Berium Springs Home for Children if you have specific questions about the programs These applications did have to be submitted by September 15th, so the applications have gone in under the endorsement of the local JCPC. However, if they are awarded and the board does not choose to participate, then you would not have to adopt a budget amendment to appropriate the funds.
But Ms. Blumenthal, if we apply, we may get this amount, or we could get an amount less than this?
Yes, sir, that's correct, because that's one and a half million statewide.
All right. Any other questions, Ms. Blumenthal?
I would like to add that the programs that were submitted were specific to requests from the local juvenile court counselors for treatment options that are not available at this time, where there's some real gaps in the services to these teenagers.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Okay. Motion for approval of the application. Vice Chairman Norman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Memo number seven is a request from our Emergency Management Department, David Martin is here, for authorization for the county to take part in a regional hazard mitigation plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
North Carolina Emergency Management approached us and is requesting that the counties across the state join up in a regionalizing our hazard mitigation plans. And in so doing, they're going to back to the Department of Homeland Security requesting a grant for all the regionalization plans. The proposal is that we be coupled with Rowan County. And the only thing we're asked to now is for approval from Mr. Smith to sign the agreement that if we get the funding, for us to hire a contractor to complete a regional plan between us and Rowan County. Our plan will come due in 2015 again. And my understanding is, is they have no intention of awarding any grants just for single jurisdictions per se, just per county and municipalities now, to do a grant, I mean, to do a plan, so I think the intent of North Carolina Emergency Management is to go ahead and get this in and get the counties done again, which should be completed by the end of 2014, and be good to 2019, and get the funding through Department of Homeland Security to complete it.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Martin? All right, hearing none, the floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Motion for approval by Mr. Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin also has memo number eight.
On our second item, I was approached by a couple different agencies wanting to do another training and exercise, similar to what we did last December, but not on such a large scale. I approached North Carolina Emergency Management about whether any funds, exercise funds available as far as grants to do another exercise. And they advised there was a small amount of funding available, so we're requesting to apply for $15,000 to conduct another exercise.
What would be the scope of this exercise, Mr. Martin?
The main plan now is to have another aircraft-type incident. However, we're wanting to start it out with a training class. Conduct a training class and conclude the training class with an exercise that involves some type of aircraft incident, but also involves some type hazmat. Our Memorial Hospital is requested to be involved, and they're needing some patients, but not on the grand scale we did last time, so.
We'll have it in April this time, though, right?
It'll be a little later, yes.
Cold as we is out there last year. Okay. All right. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the exercise funding application.
Okay. Motion for approval from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The sheriff's office has the next two items. First one is a request for approval of a budget amendment number nine for the appropriation of funds awarded in the 2011 Justice Assistance Grant.
This year, we've been awarded $20,749 in our JAG grant. We're asking for a budget amendment to accept this grant, and the funding will be used for the Youth Athletic League and also for accreditation of the crime lab.
Any questions, Mr. Phillips?
Have you started the accreditation process?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We have been to classes.
Okay.
We've been to the initial classes.
How long does the accreditation process take once it gets started?
We're hoping to be through by October of next year.
Great.
Basically, because that's what the state's requiring us to do, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve budget amendment number nine.
Motion to approve budget amendment number nine. Vice Chairman Norman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The second item we have is a budget amendment to transfer $66,875 of seized funds. This money will be used to convert 13 patrol vehicles to propane. This funding will also include the conversion kits, the computer, the concrete pad, and the wiring for the fuel station.
I asked all my questions last time. Hank Hill would be proud of you, that's all.
I heard a figure that we're saving up to $9,000 a month by using propane over gasoline. Is that figure pretty close?
We don't know yet if it's that much or not, because we haven't been on it long enough to see. We could probably have an answer to that question by the end of this month, because then we would have been on it a month. What we did see over a couple of weeks' period is that we're saving probably somewhere between 40 and 50 percent.
Sounds good.
So.
There are no other questions. The floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The next item is a request from Mr. Robert Myers, and Mr. Myers could not be here tonight, but is a request for a resolution to be adopted recognizing October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And I believe Ms. Griffith is the sponsor of this.
Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, Chairman, I move that we recommend, that we approve this resolution recognizing October 2011 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Memo 12 is a request from the Tax Administration Department for approval of the August refunds and releases, and there are no county commissioners' names on these reports.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the final item is a request for approval of the September 6th, 2011 minutes.
Okay. I would move that we, without exception, that we approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. At this time, we have announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, the Personnel Advisory Committee. We have two announcements. Terms for Don Cersei and Alma Oliphant expire on October fourth. Both individuals ineligible for reappointments. Okay. That brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. The Lake Norman Marine Commission, we have one appointment.
Mr. Chair, is the floor open for nominations? Is the floor open for nominations?
Yeah.
I nominate Becky Fox.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I talked with Ms. Fox and she is, she would be a very, very good candidate. Mark Lancaster had served on the board before and was looking to. He served on the board and it's my understanding that probably would be better if we put, if we put Mark on now and then put her on at the next opening that we have.
Yeah, I spoke with Mark about two months ago and I'd previously committed to support him. Ms. Fox, I communicated her. I misspoke earlier when I said I'd spoken to her. I communicated with her by email. And I agree with Mr. Robertson, she would be a fine appointment. But I'd previously committed to Mr. Lancaster. And she commuted back to me by email that she would appreciate her name being kept.
Yeah, well, I definitely liked her a lot, yeah.
Okay, so, did you nominate?
Yeah, I nominated her.
Okay, so, any other nominations? Okay. All in favor of Ms. Fox, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor of Mr. Lancaster, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. So, Mr. Lancaster is appointed to the Lake Norman Commission on a four-one vote. And Ms. Griffith, I appreciate your nomination and she would be a fine lady. I just was previously committed, so keep her name in the hat and I think she'll have unanimous support next time. Okay, have a note here that we have for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have five vacancies. And Mr. Anthony Terman, an employee of Piedmont Mediation Center, is interested in serving, so the floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Mr. Terman.
Okay. Terman's been nominated, are there any other nominations? If not, I move that we close the floor to nominations and appoint Anthony Terman by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Under, we'll move to unfinished business and update on the sheriff's crime lab. Mr. Dowell?
Good evening, board. I was requested back in July to report back to the board and give an update on the crime lab in front of you. I have placed some interesting graphs, which I think will answer some of your questions. And if you will, let me go through it by the pages. And then, if there's any questions at the end, we'll go at that point, if you'll let me. First of all, I want to thank Captain Phillips and our chemist, Mr. Eichert, who's put a lot of work into this. When I left here in July, had a meeting with them, sit down with them, explained to them what criteria you were looking for. And I told them that we needed to get this completed and so we could report back to you. And they've done a good job with that. Also, like to thank Captain Phillips, he's worked really hard on this propane conversion. So, those guys do a lot of work behind the scenes. And at the sheriff's office, as you know, we keep a lot of projects moving. And it's with accreditation coming up with the, I don't want to downplay that. That is a very, the criteria for us to meet that is going to be very demanding on them. And so, it's going to be very time-consuming. And, but these guys, I think, is already way ahead of the ballgame from what I understand and what I have seen and what I've asked them to do. And I think they'll complete that in a timely fashion and I think you'll be proud of that. The lab is working. If you'll go to the first page and it'll show you the cases received per physical year and the projections. Now, we do have some projections on here and understand that's what it is. It's a projection of where we think things is going to lead us to. And if you can tell, in 2010, we did approximately about six hundred cases. And in 2011, we're already up to about thirteen hundred cases. And in 2012, we're looking to stay par with that. And I'll explain a little more about that, why it's sort of staying the same when we get a little further into graphs. The next page is the cases submitted by Arden County Sheriff's Office versus outside agencies. And if you will, if you will look there again in 2010 and 2011 where we stand. But if you'll look over at 2012, you'll see that the graph has dropped for Arden County, but the other graphs has been elevated. And I'll get into that in just a minute and I'll answer that question for you. But the next page shows the agencies that have contributed thus far to the lab. And it shows the cases that has been submitted, submitted. And you can tell that the, it's starting to elevate by the cases that's coming to the lab. The reason that you see the, in 2012, the drop in that chart is because in Arden County, we're no longer submitting misdemeanor marijuana cases as of May of 2011 per the DA's request, okay? But other, the other counties are not doing that. So, that's why it's going to show the elevation there for the cases that they're going to be submitting because we get a lot of marijuana cases that come in there.
So, that accounts for the increase in the number of cases coming from outside agencies and to the decline.
That's correct.
Cases in your agents.
Yes.
Does any other thing contribute to that?
Uh, pretty much, that's the, that's the big impact for us right now.
Do you know why the DA is choosing not to have you run the marijuana, misdemeanor marijuana?
Mike, can you answer that? I don't, I have not got a reasoning, the reason why. I do not know behind, I've not sat down with her and talked to her reference that. That was a request that was sent down to us and so that's what we've carried out, but.
Yeah, my understanding is, is that they don't want us to conduct the testing on misdemeanor quantities of narcotics or drugs unless the case is going to go to trial or go to Superior Court, at which time then they would request us to test.
Is it a cost-saving measure, you think?
They just, I don't know.
I don't.
They didn't cause the DA's office anything for us to do it.
And if I could just go back, the cases that you guys are receiving, if my understanding is correct when I toured the lab, that in one case, you could potentially have four, five, six, ten different substances that you guys are analyzing. So, a case is not just necessarily one substance that you are analyzing. These fourteen hundred cases that you're almost up to potentially could have thousands of samples that you are, in case that you are analyzing.
Attachments to that case, that's correct. We're just showing the case file itself.
Right.
Not the attachments because there is, there's a lot of them coming that or that way.
Mr. Dowell, for the uninitiated here, give me the spectrum of things that you test. You test more than just drugs, is that right?
Mike, you want to go, I'll let Mike, he can.
Yes, sir, with the mass spec, we can pretty much test about anything. We can test narcotics, we can test paper. Just about anything can go into mass spec and it can tell us if there's any drugs connected to that or on that item.
Okay. Okay, didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
If you look at the, let's go over a little bit to the total fees that we've received. This will, this will a little bit answer your question. You asked me back then if we were going to see an elevation and if you can tell, we've climbed considerably from where we were at due to the money that's coming in. That's due to we're getting a little slow, like I said, out of the gate, getting started. We're actually getting more agencies involved with us. But we're also educating those clerk's offices in those other counties that for quite some time, it's been redundant that they send those monies and fees back to the SBI. It's been like that for years and years. But however, now, since we've changed a little bit and you know sometimes when change comes along, you get a little bit of friction, so. But our chemist has worked very hard, even when other counties come in and we do this. She, that's one of the first things that she addresses with them is that they need to get their clerk's office on board with us, that those fees need to be sent to us.
If the fees.
And that's starting to happen.
If those fees are sent to the state, does the state return them to you or do they keep them?
I have not received nothing, no reimbursement back from the state. And so, whether or not, you know, that's just a, you know, I'm sure that the paperwork comes through. Has some of those got slipped through, I'm sure that's happened. But so far, from what we can see or what I can see when I, when I go back to analyze some of this data, it's starting to come in. So, I think we're being pretty consistent with that.
And also, when I toured the lab, you guys indicated that it sometimes takes a couple of years before a person is tried. They go to trial and then they are charged and then they begin making payments. And so, potentially, in the next few years, we could see a huge spike in the amount of money coming into those.
There is, and actually, I've got that explained in here. One of the, it's not unusual for a case to take at least three years before it goes to trial, thus delaying those fees. They can also be attached to a probation case, which therefore, they pay payments into that. But in time, you know, we're going to recoup that if it was ordered by the judge to do that. So, it takes a little bit of, even when the case goes to court, we have to sort of rely on the DA to request it. And then, we have to rely on the judge to agree to charge the fee. And that, you know, that sometimes puts us at the mercy back of the court.
Are you having any difficulty getting judges to order the payment of that fee?
Uh, we, we have had a little bit of discrepancy with that. But pretty much, the general, they're doing pretty good with it.
If I could just interject here, I spoke with Ms. Blumstein earlier about this. She said, because I wasn't going to bring it up, she said, maybe you should, so I will. When the statute for the fee was initially written, it was for three hundred dollars for testing. And it gives the judge leeway saying that they, they may impose that fee. Last year, it was raised to six hundred dollars with the same wording of, of may impose this fee. We would prefer, if we could get you guys to help us, is to go, we would be willing to drop back to the three hundred dollar fee if the wording would be shall. And, and, but that's going to take.
Legislature.
The legislature to do that and it's a little, you know, we would need backing if we were to approach our representatives to try to get that done. But I think that would solve a lot of the problems if, if the statute was written that way.
Okay.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Chief Dowell, first of all, thank you for coming with numbers. And I'm going to ask you a few more questions, but I don't want you to not come back if I do. Most of your slides have to do with showing how y'all are starting to get more money coming in. And that's good. But, I mean, your projection for 2012 is that you're going to receive less than sixty thousand dollars. What's it costing us to run the lab? And what sort of deficit are we going to be running in 2012?
I'm thinking, Mike, did we get the, we've not got a per. I've got the figures for the, if you're asking about the figures as far as the chemist and those folks, which we've all set those figures with our seized monies.
You can only do that for some period of time, right? For three years? If you don't, if you don't know, you don't have to answer it right now.
To give you an exact figure, I couldn't give you, because you're asking with the utilities and everything that's provided in there with the, so that would take, I would have to go back and sit down with Susan and stuff to pull those figures for you.
Okay, I mean, to me, I think what we're looking to see is the, and yeah, your revenues are going up, but what are your expenses? And is that gap between revenue and expenses? Are we getting somewhere close to where we're break even? Or if it's costing us a certain amount and you're going to run in the red every year, that we're at least comfortable that even though it's not breaking even and it's not going to make any money like we thought that it might, but that the advantages of having your own lab outweigh the cost, the Arden County subs, outweigh the cost of having it, which, which the only way we'll know that is if we see the figures. So, if you don't have it, I understand that you don't have it, but I would like to see that. My next question is, how much additional capacity do y'all have to do additional testing? And, and this, um, this question, I guess, isn't apparent because just because you do more testing doesn't necessarily mean that you get more revenue. Correct? So, my question, I guess, is, is should you seek to do more testing given that you really don't know if it's profitable to do testing for outside agencies? And then, so, so I guess that, that is one question. Is it, does it make sense to go get more business if you have the capacity? And then, are there certain types of testing that you, you tend to get reimbursed for as opposed to others? And is it possible for us to be selective into what sort of tests that we would accept?
Well, I understand that there's more testing goes on in the lab than drugs, okay?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
There's more testing that goes on at the lab other than drugs.
Correct.
Okay, we may have a case that comes in, we do fingerprints, you know, we got the shooting chambers. There's a lot of things that, in a day's time, that goes on in the lab. Now, the fee thing is back, you know, we're sort of addressing one section here.
Okay.
So, if you're asking me to address this section on this side, which would encumber the whole lab, we're going to, that's not going to be in the revenue here. You follow me? The fees that we're getting from the drug testing is what's bringing in our revenues.
Okay.
Okay. Other things that we may do in the lab is not going to encumber those fees for us. But if you're citizens out here in the county and your house has been broken into and we can bring things from, from your residence back into the lab and we can test and we can lift fingerprints and we can do some DNA testing there, we're going to solve that case. Now, can you put a figure with that? I can't, you know.
Okay, are we accepting those types of cases from other counties?
We have done some of those cases from other, not, not a lot because some of that stuff, they can still do theirself. What's one of the, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, some of the things we've done for some other counties. We have done some latent print lifting for some other counties, we've done that.
You guys are moving into the blood alcohol testing as well, which will generate some revenue, is that correct?
When we get there, like I said, that's in, that's in the process of doing that. Yes, that, that could, I do not know how much with that till we get into it. That's sort of one of the areas that we've not jumped into yet. We've got the machine and stuff to do it with, we just hadn't got that quite accomplished yet.
Is it possible that by 2013 that the revenues generated from 2010 will begin to show up in 2013?
Sure, yeah, I look for that for the next five years. If you, if you go back, I mean, we're going to be getting revenues from what we're doing now, probably five years from now. Can I tell you where the spike is? And to answer some, some of your questions, Mr. Robertson, the, from what you're asking me, are we going to break even with the lab? You know, right now, can I forecast that? No, sir. And I think if I had some set figures here in front of you, I still couldn't sit here and say, oh, yes, we're going to break that barrier over that until I can see exactly how much testing we're doing and I can sort of see how consistent the courts is bringing back in some of these revenues. Right now, we said twenty-five percent, in which I think, you know, that's a pretty good return for what we're doing. I think in the next two or three years, and I will say this, I think that we'll be pleased with where we're. I think that we'll be pleased with where we're at.
Well, over time, as you... As you get cases in the pipeline, some of them may... There may be a longer time period from the time you initiate the test or conduct the test till you're actually paid. But when you get your customer base expands to the point, you have a number of cases in the pipeline, your revenue should level off to some point. I may be wrong, but I believe the figure we talked about in the budget was close to $300,000 a year to operate this thing. The point I made when I brought it up in the budget, Mr. Dowell, was I was not so much interested in... You know, it was presented to us that we could break even or make money. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that this board demands that you pay for the thing, because you make a good point. If you can solve a case and get somebody in jail before they skip the county after they've broken some lady's home and robbed her of her dignity, that's worth something to the public, it's worth something to me. But I do congratulate you. It seems like you're headed in the right direction toward at least mitigating the matter of the $300,000, so I'm not going to give you a hard time tonight. Thank you for what you've done, I'd just like to see you continue to do better, and I'll be satisfied. Is that fair enough?
Yes, sir. And we'll continue to strive in that direction.
Okay. We appreciate your efforts.
Can I ask a question? I don't see Catawba County participating, is there any reason why they don't want to deal with us?
Yeah, I didn't see Alexandria either.
The... Well, okay, Catawba has talked to us, and Sheriff Reed there has expressed an interest that he was possibly going to move some of his stuff down here. It goes again that once offices or departments get redundant, and what they're doing is a little hard to change the ballgame a little bit. But yes, he did say that he was going to try to start bringing some of his stuff. Alexandria, some of their... They do not have a lot that comes from there, and they're still sort of, you know, staying with... To my understanding, is doing pretty good with what they've got.
I think you need to work on that Catawba county. They got the new sheriff over there, and the people have been pretty much upset over there with the previous situation they had, so it may be a good time to work with them.
The question I'd ask you is, do we have capacity to do additional test or lab functions?
Right now, we do, yes. We can expand further, a little further in the areas that we've got. The chemist has already said, you know, that there's some areas for expansion, and we may, as time goes on. Right now, a monkey wrench, it got thrown towards, we're going to have to get a credit date. And that's going to slow us down a little bit. But once we get to that point, I think that's going to put us on a higher level, and it's going to open up more doors.
Okay. Well, thank you again, sir. Mr. Phillips, thank you. Since the evening for public comment period, is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Any new business to come to our attention? County managers report?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of things. This weekend, on September 24th, from 12:30 to 5, will be the Fall Household Hazardous Waste Day out at the landfill. This is only at the Twin Oaks facility. Good day to recycle any paint, or get rid of, I guess. Any paint, or any fluids, or things like that that you have around the house, good opportunity to get that out. The recommendation was get there early, because they do tend to have a line. Second thing, I just...
You have the next one after that, because I can't be there this Saturday.
There's two a year, two a year.
Four, two a year?
Yeah, there should be one in the spring, but I'm not sure when. The second thing that I have is just to thank you to our facility services, staff, and the cooperative extension for all their help out at the fair this year. That was something that with Ken being gone, a lot of, you know, a lot of numbers had to be connected, so I just wanted to, you know, give my thanks to them. That's all I have.
Yeah, we were... On the fairgrounds committee, we were a little apprehensive, but everybody stepped up, and things went pretty smooth. Okay? This time, I'll offer a motion to go into closed session under statute 143-318-11A3 for legal consultation, and 143-318-11A4 for economic development. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
One matter of action is resolved to this closed session and I'll open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the consent judgment with the DOT in regards to Brawley Middle School.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? During mine all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. At this point I offer a motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.